Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the June 16th meeting of the Temple Terrace City Council. Just a reminder to everybody, please silence or turn off your electronic devices. If you would, please stand and join us in prayer and pledge allegiance.
Dear God, we come before you tonight during times of great uncertainty. What we are certain of is though, your message of love and peace is the only way forward for our city, our nation, and for the world. We ask your special blessing of protection on our police department as they work to serve and protect our citizens during these very difficult times. They too are our sons and daughters, husbands and wives. What they do is vital and we value their contributions to our city's future success. Be with our employees, our citizens, and this council as we do our very best to guard the quality of life for all of our city. This we ask in your precious name, amen. You're joined with the presence of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schistler. Our first item of business is recognitions and proclamations of which we have none. The second item are presentations of which we also have none. The third item are board appointments. There's one vacancy on the Riverwatch Task Force for an alternate member. The city received one application from Heather Truby Brown. I hope I'm saying that correctly. If there are no objections, I would ask for a motion to appoint Heather Truby Brown as an alternate member of the Riverwatch Task Force for a term extending until June 16th, 2023.
I move that forward. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, I'm sorry, I should have asked the, well, all those, we'll take our vote first. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No nays? Ms. Brown, I think I goofed up if you're here. Would you like to address the council? If you're here. I don't know if she's here or not.
No.
Okay, good. Saved. She's not here. So, very good. The second item, and I'll try not to mess this one up, is the municipal code enforcement board, the appointment of a regular member. There's one vacancy on the municipal code enforcement board for a regular member. The city received one application from Samir Tamimi, who I do know and I do not see him here tonight. If there's no objections, I would ask for a motion to appoint Samir to the code enforcement board.
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I have one question.
Yes.
Do we have any alternates that would, is the process an alternate that move up to a regular position?
If they apply.
If they apply.
If they apply. They, they, well, it's not automatic. We still have to make the appointment.
No, I mean, they'd be eligible to.
But the alternates have to apply as if, as everybody owns. Yes. Good, good question. Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No nays? Mr. Tamimi, welcome to the code board. Next item is consideration of minutes from the previous meeting. If the minutes are acceptable, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
To approve.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
You're gonna go out on a limb. Are there any discussion of the minutes? Corrections to be made? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda are persons wishing to, persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda or items on the consent agenda. Ladies and gentlemen, a three-minute time limit will be imposed on all comments from the public. We do ask that speakers only speak from the podium so that they can be captured on the record. During public comment on items not on the agenda, the city manager and the directors in attendance do make note of these items. All of your comments are taken seriously and will be followed up on. We also ask you to start by stating your name and city of residence. I have a couple of requests to speak. The first one I received is from Mr. Kevin O'Neil. Welcome, sir.
Thanks for having me. I'll dutifully wear my mask. All right, I'm Kevin O'Neil. I am a executive committee member of Libertarian Party Hillsborough County. I technically live in Tampa. As you know, we ran a candidate for special election Florida House, Brian Zemino, is one of your city residents. And I'm speaking for small business. As you may or may not know, the Hillsborough County itself is literally qualifying all businesses. Seventy-eight percent of them qualify as small businesses under some federal guideline, which I can't recite at this moment. So we have a huge preponderance, or huge number of small businesses, whereas the state on average is forty-four percent. So, as you all know, you guys require taxes to function as a city, but likewise, businesses have not been able to function, have been quarantined at some level or another. First time in world history we quarantined healthy people, and the people that did that was government. Government is the one who did this unprecedented act. And likewise, we like to be compensated for this, small businesses, by having our tangible personal property tax prorated discounted back prior to the bill going out in January. So, what that means is simply, if we have a, if this is the timeline for a whole year, we got tangible personal property tax. I'm looking for you guys to make a motion to dip that down for some number of days and pop it back up so you be back to whole before the year's out, so that the tax collector can easily do the math and compensate our businesses for this quarantine time, which is presently at the fifteen-week mark, fifteen-week mark for the current condition. So this, um, this prevents businesses from having to go through the appraisal process, which as you know, costs money, is time-consuming. These guys on Main Street, the business owners, are trying to get back to business. You want them to survive. I want them to survive. They and their families want them to survive as businesses. And by doing what I'm proposing, simply kicks your budgets down the road another few months. A little less cash now, you'll get your cash later, because these businesses will be still in business at the end of 2021, hopefully. And to this, I stand and speak. And I need, uh, I need someone to sponsor, you know, the motion's language. I know it's a math problem. I've done the math. Be happy to step forward and spend my time with anybody here to, you know, go through the numbers, put a package together. Maybe one of you is interested in selling this motion amongst yourselves to get this passed. I know it's messy. I know there's a dozen people who want the tax money, but at the end of the day, we're working the whole county, the three municipalities, the county level, and we're pushing this. So this is a win-win for a politician who wants to get re-elected and wants to do the right thing. So I'm Kevin O'Neil from the Libertarians. My information's been submitted. You should have it in the record. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Next speaker is Mr. Moses Brown. Welcome, sir.
Good evening. I'm Pastor Moses Brown. I live in the Bluff here in Temple Terrace. I'm not really sure where Temple Terrace begins. I don't really see a sign, I don't follow coming in, but I tell people I am in Temple Terrace. One of my major concerns was as, first of all, I want to commend our council and also the police department for the excellent job they've been doing so far. But I wanted to be sure that as we go forward, the catastrophic situation you see around our country, that that don't occur here in Temple Terrace. And my greatest concern was I didn't want to procrastinate, to wait till something happened, but I was hoping that we could have a task, a community task force in Temple Terrace that we, the citizens can come together and address certain issues as we go through month to month, that we wouldn't have to see something come up as a surprise. I don't really know what our standards here in the police department, I don't know if we still have, I think our dear president banned some of the practices today, but I don't know really what our standards are, but I think the citizens should know, as our good chief, Vano, put things together, but we should all know really where do we stand in our city of Temple Terrace. I do believe, and strongly believe, that with a community task force in place, we can move around some of the adversity that comes up. It won't be surprise as we go through. And I think the task force should be made up of diversity of the citizens in this community from, I think we have a multiplicity of white, black, Hispanics, et cetera, and that can show what Temple Terrace stands for. I'm proud to be a Temple Territorian, and I'm hoping that we can even make this place a better place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there other members of the public who wish to address the council on items not on the agenda tonight? Very well, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Stevenson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have two items on consent agenda this evening. Item 7A is a resolution approving purchase of two Thompson SJ6JSVEE pumps for the Public Works Sewer Department, the amount of ninety thousand dollars from Thompson Pump utilizing the Florida Sheriff's Association contract FSA 19-VEA 17.0 Spec 171. These funds are allocated in the current physical year budget of the water and sewer public works utility. In account 410-1931-535.64-99. The second item on the agenda is a resolution approving the purchase of a hundred thousand kilowatt trailer mounted generator for the public works sewer department in the amount of seventy-eight thousand five hundred and sixty dollars from Mid-Florida Diesel utilizing a Florida Sheriff's Association contract FSA 19-VEA 17.0 Spec 107. Current physical year budget includes funding for this purchase from account 410-1931-535.64-99. That's consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, if the consent agenda is acceptable, I'd ask for a motion to approve. We have motion by Mr. Chambers, seconded by Mr. Schistler. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I just have a question.
Actually, it's a non-discussable motion.
Just have a question.
Go ahead.
The first item, is that to replace pumps that we have, or is this a new pump?
These are, these are new pumps.
Okay. And then the second item, is that really more or less a hurricane preparation to get us?
That is a generator ban that we will move from station to station in the event of an emergency or something that we have, something fail, we can move that pump from station to station.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No nays? And just to, I know this is kind of a stickler for details here, I understand that, but on the consent agenda, if we have questions or we want to discuss them, we're supposed to pull that item so we can.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'd do the same thing, just in future. Okay, next item. Hope that wasn't too harsh. I've done the same thing. I'm sorry. Okay. Next item, the public hearings ordinance is a resolutions. The first item is a resolution adopting the five-year update to Hillsborough County's local mitigation strategy. Fire Chief Kemp will explain.
Honorable Mayor, Council, Ian Kemp, your fire chief and emergency manager. I'm here for, to present to you a local mitigation strategy, five-year update resolution. In 1999, the city council adopted the countywide local mitigation strategy, which encompasses unincorporated Hillsborough County and the cities of Plant City, Tampa, and Temple Terrace. In August 2015, the city adopted another five-year update to the LMS, identifying and prioritizing hazard mitigation projects. Member agencies must readopt the LMS every five years. The state of Florida Division of Emergency Management has reviewed the 2020 Hillsborough County Local Mitigation, Hazard Mitigation Update for compliance with federal hazard mitigation planning standards. The goal of the LMS is to minimize the effects of any potential natural or man-made disasters on our community and its infrastructure. The current countywide LMS plan contains a list of proposed projects to accomplish the plan's goals in compliance and in accordance with the Federal Emergency Management Agency Having said that, it is recommended that the five-year update to the local mitigation strategy identifying and prioritizing hazard mitigation projects be approved and adopted by resolution.
Good, thank you, Chief. Before we get to council questions, are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, council members, are there any questions of Chief Kemp? Mr. Schistler, you have the floor.
What are we mitigating? What are we working on?
I think, um, one of the, one of the objects that we as a, me as the emergency manager, have a project for, we're trying different funding mechanisms. This is one that we in Temple Terrace are working on, is Emergency Management Center. As of right now, you may or may not be aware that we do not have a hardened facility that is capable of withstanding hurricanes above a category three in our emergency management center. So it's a, it's a priority of ours, and I think the city managers, to look for funding so that we can build a new, new facility. I think also within the public works arena, they have a couple of projects as well. I wouldn't be, be up to date on those specific projects, but I know it has to do with, I think, pump stations and ability to, to clear water throughout the streets and that, that we don't have flooding in certain areas, but that would be something that Troy would be able to speak on.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other questions, council members? Mrs. Donahue.
Is this something you are going to bring to us at this next budget discussion?
I'll bring it to you now, we need the EOC. No, I, I, I think, we threw the city manager, last year, we, we went up to look for a legislative appropriation bill, and I think we were, it was two years in a row, we've been trying to get some money through the state. Unfortunately, this is a very difficult time, and it did not pass for the second time in a row. This time, last year, there was projects that the local mitigation plan approved before our emergency operation center. We're gonna try again this year. And then, at some point, I think there does need to be some discussion in regards to funding if those, those two areas or others don't, don't, don't pan, pan out. I think it's a, it's a, definitely a need. In my opinion, it's, it's one of the top needs of certainly as emergency manager here in the city, and should be for, for the city in general, and there's so many different ways you can fund it. It's very difficult as, you know, a small city to, to be a grant writer as well and try to find the grants. There are some out there. We try our best. And of course, there's other ways of funding, either capital, CIT, companies, you know, cities have, have done, you know, floated bonds, they've done, you know, different ways of, of funding, but it's a priority of mine, and, and the city manager's aware of that. And it's a priority of his as well.
Just to be clear to everybody, so we don't stray too far outside the bookends here, what we're voting on here is to adopt, is to, to adopt the upgrades to the comprehensive local mitigation. We're not adopting anything about EOCs and budgets and so, not, not.
I apologize if I cut you off.
No, 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 I just want to make sure everybody watching.
I found an opportunity.
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions of the council?
No.
Okay, very well, then if no, no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No nays?
Thank you.
Very good, Chief. Thank you. He was hopeful, I think. The, the, next item on the agenda is a resolution to award the construction of Master Lift Station SA to Danus Utilities. Public Works Director of Utilities, Troy Titch, will explain.
If it's okay if everyone, I'm lowering my mask, I do have quite a bit of speaking to do tonight.
Okay.
I also want to say it's good to see everybody. It's been some time since I've been in, in chambers, and it's always nice to see everyone here. As with all staff, we've been following on TV and, and tied into different systems, making sure that we're available should we be needed. A little sad that I missed Ian's presentation last week when he brought up the stop, drop, and roll as one of the funding, or possibilities for funding with the money he had, and I, I talked to him a little bit about it, and I said that could be a great diversionary opportunity if you're asked a question that you can't answer, just simply demonstrate the process on the floor, and that gives you a few minutes of potential clarity, so.
So noted.
If at some point you see me fall to the floor, don't worry about my health and well-being, I'm looking for clarity.
You know, all during my career, Mr. Tinch, they told me to never poke paramedics or emergency room nurses.
I'll keep that in mind. So, anyway, I'm here actually tonight to, to not tell, to tell jokes, but to speak, seek approval of a resolution for the, toward the construction of SA to Danus Utilities. I know I've talked about this project on numerous occasions, about this particular lift station, the fact that it's, it's a rather old station, it's almost forty years in age. So it's really lived well beyond its lifespan. Typically, you look at eighteen to twenty years. As a matter of fact, the station is so old that the pumping system that we have in there is in such poor condition, we're on complete bypass. So we actually have large pumps outside of the station that are pumping the station down to ensure that we are, are pushing that affluent on down, on, down the line. In addition, as I mentioned, this is a master lift station. This is one of the three lift stations that we push our wastewater out to the city of Tampa, so it's extremely important that we get the station back online, we get the station operating properly. We did release this for design back in February of last year. Since that time, we have been pushing forward with that opportunity. We competitively bid this project. We did receive seven competitive bids for construction of Lift Station A. Those ranged in price from a little over four million dollars to just under two million dollars, which we were very pleased to see those estimates come in below that two million dollar mark. That was kind of the area that we were hoping to stay within. The lowest apparent bidder, or the, the lowest bidder, was Danus Utilities, as indicated. And Danus Utilities, you may remember, was awarded a project for a lift station rehabilitation project, Lift Station A, late last year. They did a fantastic job on that lift station rehabilitation, it's been complete for some time. Staff was very pleased with their professionalism, with the speed at which they got out there and finished that project. So we're looking forward to continuing that relationship with Danus and having them work on this station, and, and hoping that they can bring that level of expertise back and help us push this project forward and get it done in a very timely manner. So we're real excited about that. In addition, the design team, Kimley Horn, also designed A Station, so they had an opportunity to kind of work with Danus. So there's already kind of a relationship that's built there between the construction firm and the design team, so that, that in itself is a good thing. So that said, staff recommends city council approve the expenditure of one million nine hundred seventy-nine thousand seven hundred dollars and eighty cents for the construction of Lift Station SA to Danus Utilities to be paid from account number 430-3899-3535.63-33. I will stand for questions if any.
Very good. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, council members, do you have any questions for Director Tinch?
No, thank you. It was a nice presentation.
Thank you.
Mr. Schistler, you have the floor.
Yeah, yes. Is this the same one, this is the same one that we, we brought before us?
In February, yes.
And then you went back for a bid.
That's correct.
Were these guys involved with that original?
No, they were not. That was Warden Smith, and that was through a CMRA, our C-MAR contract.
Right. And how much was that original? Did you come to us for that? I don't remember what the amount was.
It was slightly more expensive, about sixteen thousand dollars.
Okay, so we saved a penny or two.
Saved some money, absolutely.
Okay, good. Thank you. Good, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Other questions? If there are no other questions, is there a motion to accept?
We should approve. The motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No nays? The resolution passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is a resolution awarding materials testing and technical construction oversight to Kimley Horn for the construction of Master Lift Station SA that we just discussed. Public Works Director of Utilities, Troy Titch, will explain this item also.
Again, good evening, everyone. Troy Titch, Public Works Utilities Director. This obviously directly relates to the resolution that you just passed. So this is the, the materials testing, this is the construction oversight for this project. Because this is going to be a new construction, this is a very vital component to that process. We brought on Kimley Horn as the engineer of record, who you would typically have then do the construction oversight, to test the materials of the concrete, to make sure that all the materials they bring on site meet the specifications that are called for in the design, that the pumps are the correct sized pumps, that the, the material that are used for the, the lines themselves are the correct type of material, whether they be plastic or, or some sort of steel. So it's important that we have these guys on board to really oversee this process. And in addition, they'll be heavily involved in the kickoff of the project, they'll be providing us with meetings as the project progresses, and then as the project wraps up, they'll be providing us with those as-built drawings at the end, or, or record drawings for the project, which basically lets us know that it was designed in accordance with the plans, that everything is in place, that the materials if used differently are marked and noted. So it's, it's important for us, as we move forward with this project and work on maintenance, we know what we're dealing with. In addition, I did want to talk a little bit about the price before I move forward, and typically this type of an effort, it runs eight to ten percent of your construction cost. Well, having had a good relationship and continued relationship with Kimley Horn, and Kimley Horn knowing Danus, we were able to kind of negotiate that down and get that as low as possible. So, we came in at a price that's less than five percent of the construction cost, so I really feel like the dollar amount that's listed here is, is really the best bang for the buck the citizens of Temple Terrace can expect for the level of effort and professionalism that I know we're gonna get from Kimley Horn. So that said, staff recommends the city council approve the expenditure of eighty-nine thousand one hundred and twenty-one dollars for the materials testing and technical construction oversight of Master Lift Station SA to Kimley Horn and Associates, Inc., to be paid for out of account 430-3899-535.63-33. I will stand for questions if any.
Very good. Before questions, are there any members of the public who wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, council members, questions?
That's an amazing reduction in costs. Thank you. Good job.
Questions? No questions? Seeing no questions, I would ask for a motion to approve.
I move to approve.
A motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No nays? The resolution passes. The last item in this section of the meeting is a first reading of an ordinance providing for the partial vacation and dedication of easements at 186 and 202 Sunnyside Road. Once again, Public Works Director of Utilities, Troy Titch, will explain.
Thank you again, Troy Titch, Public Works Utilities Director. Feeling like a little bit of a broken record here. If I could get Kristen to pull up the, I have a brief PowerPoint presentation. A lot of the language to me in this, in these easements is somewhat convoluted. I know I worked very closely with Pam, and she helped me through the process, but I'm a firm believer that a picture's worth a thousand words, so hopefully when I show you graphically what this is going to look like, it will make a little more sense than you trying to read through that language in that particular document. So, where are these lots located? As you can see here, the lots 186 and 202 are located just off of Sunnyside Road, which is adjacent to Buller Parkway. If you recall, these are the lots that we sold to Habitat for Humanity, and they are actually wrapping up the building sites themselves. They should be done quite quickly, and so when we went to go through the construction phase, we met with them and discussed a particular issue associated with Lot 14. As you see, the green area is, was the existing, or I guess is, the existing easement. And it really cuts up that lot, almost to the point where it's unbuildable. So we, we sat down with the engineering, engineering department, we sat down with the folks from Habitat for Humanity and said, listen, we do have lines in there, we have a sewer line, we have a water line, but we maybe do not need the full twenty-five feet. We could reduce that down to a smaller cross-section to allow you then to go in and actually construct on that site, make that lot constructible, if you will, because you cannot put permanent construction in an easement, no, no permanent facilities. So you wouldn't be able to build a house in an easement or put a concrete sl-. So you wouldn't be able to build a house in an easement, or put a concrete slab, or something that would be considered permanent. So we, we then went back to the drawing board and we came up with this concept. And what we ended up doing on the Lot fourteen is we shrunk that down to about sixteen feet. On the backside of the lot, we had a much narrower easement that was in existence, so we widened that out to fifteen feet to ensure that we have enough room there to get in there with our equipment. We do have a sewer line that runs through that particular easement on the east side of the property. And then, of course, you'll note that we also added a small seven-and-a-half-foot easement on the southern end of Lot thirteen. And that gives us an opportunity in the future if we need to allow for an access point for some sort of utility. Currently, there is no utility in that area. It's just something we wanted to have in the event that we would need it going forward. So to kind of give you an idea of what the two look like, there's an overlay of both. You can see there that, again, that we shrunk the, the larger twenty-five-foot easement down to approximately sixteen, increased the easement along the backside of the property, and then added the easement along the southern end of the property. That's really all I have to say. Again, this is the first reading on this particular issue, but I would be happy to stand for questions if any.
Well, I have a question, but prior to that, are there any, no, wait a minute. So there's no opportunity for public comment on this? Am I reading this correctly?
How did you go ahead and say public comment?
I thought so too, but I'm not seeing that. So, okay. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Okay. Seeing none, I'll ask council members, are there any questions? I do have a question. These two lots, are these the lots that the new houses have already been built on?
Yes, sir.
So how did they build, how'd they get permitted to build the house on the lot that?
Well, they had the lot surveyed, they had the easement surveyed, so they constructed the house knowing the easement was to come, so that the lot and the easement do not overlap, so that there's that distance needed from the easement to the edge of the home.
Okay, so they were able to build the house with the proper setbacks?
Yes.
Even if we didn't do this?
Would, no, if they, we had not reduced that northern easement down to sixteen feet, they would not have been able to build on that lot.
Okay, well, I think that's the point in what I'm asking. So we're, we're doing this after the fact.
A little bit after the fact, yes.
Well, it's not a little bit, there's a house on it.
That's correct. So.
To put, to put one, let me, let me interject here. To put one of their prototype homes on the lot, they need this modification to this easement. Otherwise, they would have to come up with a whole brand-new plan with some kind of side entry or something like that, so.
No, I understand that.
Not that it's impossible to build on the existing lot, it would certainly allow them to build one of their prototype homes and be a lot, be a lot situated on the lot a little bit easier.
Mr. Chambers.
Somebody, what would happen if we don't approve this tonight?
There would be an issue associated with that easement, the existing easement.
We've got Mrs. Forrester here, if you've got the applicant who's here.
Well, it's, it's not, it's not the question of whether it's wise to do the easement reduction or not. I think the question is, why are we doing this after there's a building already on the easement? That's, that's the question.
Yeah, let me answer that by saying, when we first did this, we were not aware that, we even had sewer lines in that, on that lot. We were not aware that there was an easement there.
But how did we issue permits then?
I don't know, I don't, have we issued permits? I don't even know that we've issued permits.
Mr. Sishto, you had a question?
It's along the same lines. It's, it's, the horse is already out of the barn. That's a problem. I just, we should have had this several months ago. There's, are there sewer lines under the property, under the house?
No, there are no sewer lines or water lines underneath the house.
So there's absolutely no, none of our infrastructure goes under the houses?
That would never be allowed, correct.
Okay, that's, so how, so the issue is just the, the depth of the easement. You can't build on top of the easement also, so it has to be adjusted. Well, I, I'm, I understand it. I wish it had brought, been brought to us a long time ago.
And maybe I can speak to that if you don't mind. We've had, have had some recent turnover in staff. This has been, we've been working on this for some time, and I think it got pushed back a little bit. And then when COVID, a lot of things kind of slowed the process. Ideally, yes, absolutely. I agree a hundred percent with you. We should have had this taken care of well before we got to this stage in the game. So I will take responsibility for that as the director of that department, that we didn't stay on top of that. But we are trying to right the ship, if you will, and make this correct. We, it's something that before we even began the building process, had been more or less approved internally with staff, that yes, this is doable. This body obviously has the, the authority to approve that. And again, staff, our recommendation is that it would be approved, because we have worked with Habitat on that particular design.
Are there other questions?
Yeah, one more. So with the, the change in easement, your trucks, everything that you would need to service a sewer line in the future and all that, that gives, this gives them enough room?
Yes. Fifteen feet is an adequate size easement. As a matter of fact, it's a fairly common size easement. If you think about the average truck, it's probably in the eight-foot range, maybe a piece of equipment closer to ten, so that gives you that additional room on each side to, to work.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, no further questions. I'll ask for a motion to approve, or I'm sorry, I'll ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, providing for the partial vacation and dedication of easements along and behind the residence, having a street, residence, having a street address of one-eight-six and two-o-two Sunnyside Road, providing for conditions of vacation, providing for recrodation, providing for an effective date, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith.
Good. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'm moved to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No nays? This ordinance will appear for a second reading in public hearing on Tuesday, July seventh. Thank you, Mr. Tinch.
Thank you.
Is, or, is there any other carryover council business from our previous meetings? Mr. Sishto, you have the floor.
Oh, chickens, carryover business?
Carryover business. You have the floor.
Thank you. I, I, I went back and I listened to the comments and remarks made by the residents that appeared at the last meeting. And I've done some, some research on my own, as well as numerous discussions and emails from current, existing, from current residents. And this issue's come up before, and we live in a residential community. We don't live in a farm community. They're cute, they're cool for the first couple of months, but I, for one, don't believe that we need to get into a, become a farming community. I realize a few chickens aren't, but a few chickens turn into other chickens and we get a rooster, and then we got, you have Ebor City where you have to stop your car to let the chickens walk across the street. I don't know how many times I've been late to meetings down there. So anyway, I don't have any appetite to, to spend council, our council's time, staff's time. I know they put together a book and it looks quite interesting, and I apologize for, if that was a pain to them. But I don't think we need to, need to go further with this. It's, you know, we didn't, we didn't move to a, a resident, a, a farming environment. We live here because of the, the structure. I think it would only end up degradating areas of the city. Code enforcement, we have all kinds of issues. Can we, we can't even go, we wouldn't be able, we'd need permission to go in their backyards to count how many chickens they have, or see how big their chicken coops are, and foxes and coyotes will be coming out of the woodwork and everything that goes along with it. I, I, I say we, we walk away from it, and we have, we have an existing ordinance, and we don't have to try and get into the minutia and the weeds of chickens. Well, I need a guinea hen, now I need this, now I need that. Before you know it, we have a mess. So I, I would, I'd like to, the council to walk away from the, the issue. We have, we have an ordinance on the books. Leave it as such, and I'm sorry. That's all.
Other carryover council business to discuss? Mr. Stevenson, I do have a question. Do you have any idea when the public can expect the beginning of your new recycling program to begin?
Mr. Mayor?
I was actually going to talk about that during.
During your, okay, well, I'll hold the question off then. Okay, very good.
Or I could talk now about it, doesn't matter.
We'll, we'll wait. I'll wait for you. Any other council business? Okay, new business or board reports? Mr. Chambers, you have the floor, sir.
Yes. Well, the Arts Council has another project. We've been very successful with the community corners, the painting of the corners. We started the sign program to honor our essential workers. We also have ongoing now the quilt project. Turn in your little squares and we'll make a nice big quilt out and display it around the city. We've got good turnout on that. So now we have another one. And this is to help with the cancellation of the Fourth of July activities. So with partnership with the city, and we're trying to get some other clubs involved, we want to do a Fourth of July property house decorating contest throughout the city. So it's kind of like a parade, except you decorate your house and everybody else drives around and looks at it. So we want to start that. There'll be two divisions, daytime and nighttime, so if you want to put up lights, anything you want for the nighttime, daytime, decorate your house, decorate your yard, decorate your car, leave it out front, decorate your golf cart, leave it out front, something. You'll register through, I think, the city, not all the details done yet, and then judges will go around, and then we will have prizes and recognition to the, the winners of the contest. Plus, everybody gets to drive around and look at all the nice decorations. So we'll be getting the permanent information out very shortly on that.
Very good. And I, I do want to comment to the public too. I, this is really, I know it's the year of COVID-19, it's the year of civil unrest, but it's also been the year of the Temple Terrace Arts Council. I, I have to tell you that I asked them early on in March, when this all began, to, to try to come up with ideas as community builders, and they have really worked double time on this. And there's been sign campaigns, there's been projects, there's been, and we have two of the Arts Council members on our council, but they have really done a wonderful job and they continue to do that. So thank you to both of you and the rest of the Arts Council. They've also done a tremendous job painting the, the walls down at River Hills and, and Fifty-S sixth and, and Bush and Fifty-Sixth. They're really nice. Those, those turned out very nice. So thank you for all you do, and to all the other members, please pass that along. Is there other new business or board reports? Okay. Mr. Stevenson, city manager's report.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not to bring up the sore subject, but between our last meeting and this meeting, I had my staff, Ms. Parlow, put together your chicken book, we called it. It's got a whole bunch of information on there that relates to other communities, so on and so forth. But it is really just for information on stuff that we've been able to find, that along with some articles, and certainly some of the emails that have been shared with us since then. There is really nothing to do, other than we just wanted to share some of that information with council. We've got a budget book, the preliminary budget book that is coming out. It was delivered to me this afternoon. We'll be getting that out to you guys very shortly. We have our initial budget meeting on the twenty-third, which is next Tuesday, to talk about general fund, and then a meeting on the twenty-fifth to talk about the capital, the capital program. So both those meetings are from nine AM to twelve AM here in this, this room. So certainly, the public is invited as well to take care to join in. We have a meeting on Friday from two o'clock to four PM. And some of us are a little misunderstanding the purpose of that meeting. That is not a budget meeting. We will not be talking budget. It is basically to start conversation with council about setting some priorities on what you want us to do next year. If you remember correctly, we're supposed to have a goal-setting meeting in March. That got kind of kicked to the side with COVID. And it's certainly one of these things that we just need to have some conversation on as far as where council wants us to be. At that same meeting, we are prepared to share with council the status of what COVID has done to some of our revenue. We have a bunch of shared revenue that has been affected. Certainly, we need to make you aware of that before we go, before we go into budget hearing. We do have a shortfall in revenue that's expected and projected. We'll be sharing it with you on Friday, so. Last but not least, the recycle program. Excuse me. I know this is a, a very contentious conversation to have. We have been working diligently, trying to come up with this program. We presented council with some ideas last, last meeting. We're following through with those with some minor changes and tweaks. Mr. LeBlanc was on vacation last week, so we were able to meet yesterday, you know, between him, myself, and Ms. Hayes, who we have engaged to help us push this out and push it out right, so that we get it right the first time. We don't have any confusion and certainly, we are looking to, to push the first stage out that we had talked about, June twenty-ninth. I don't want that to be considered set in stone yet. We are working on some pamphlets, we are working on some signage. And I don't want to start saying that we're going to push it out then until I know that we've got all this in place, okay? But we are looking to begin this the last week in June. That is our target date. But we will be getting this out as much as we can, and certainly, I know that somebody had this conversation with us on suggestions on how to communicate this. We're, we're still getting people that are writing us and saying they know nothing about the suspension of recycling and everything else. We are working very diligently to try to get this out as many places as we can. And we will certainly want to roll this out as quickly as we can, and certainly as efficiently as we can, so that everybody has the same information, all at the same time. Ms. Donahue sent me an email this morning, and there's green bins out at the curb today. Have no idea why there's green bins at the curb today. We have not released any kind of start date, but I, that's just some of the assumptions that are being made in the neighborhood that I wish people would quit doing and let us kind of set this program in place. We will do the very best we can with this, this budget season. We're looking to maybe semi-automate this, which is some of that information that we'll bring to you at, at budget time, with some costs in order to do that. But in the meantime, we're going to follow suit with what we presented last, last meeting, with kind of opening this thing up in a couple of stages. So we are real close. I know the signage and the tags have been ordered. But again, I don't know a delivery date, and I certainly don't want to tell you it's going to be tomorrow, when it may be two days from now. So with that, we're working diligently to get this out. We will do this and we'll make sure the council knows definite dates before we start publishing this.
Back to the Friday meeting that we have, I, I get a lot of emails, as I'm sure you do. I'm trying to remember. I know you sent me a draft of the agenda. Did everybody get that? You did, okay. That's what I was, okay. All right, I couldn't remember if you sent it to everybody or just me.
Well, I sent it to you first and said, does this work for you? You said, okay, so I sent it out to everybody after that.
Okay, I just want to make sure they got it, so they, okay, good. Thank you. Anything else?
And, and the subsequent dates, the question was asked, the, the other dates on budget meetings in July and August, those dates are at the bottom of that agenda. We'll, we'll make sure that everybody knows those dates on Friday, so.
Okay, good. Anything else, sir?
Yes, sir, that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Shone, you've been quiet tonight. Anything to report?
I'm going to stay quiet. I have nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Well, I guess no news from your attorney is probably good news.
That's good news.
Yeah. Well, I do have a couple of comments to, to make for the public. I know a lot of you probably don't follow or watch the, the weekly, twice a week, meetings of the Emergency Policy Group. I don't blame you for not watching them. They do tend to go on. But there, there are some things that I should share with you that are a bit concerning. Since the reopening at the beginning of May, our county has experienced dramatic increases of the spread of COVID-19. Very, very rapid increases of, from one, one meeting to the next. So there's, a lot of this virus is still out in the community, and unfortunately, it's rather unclear as to how it is being transmitted. I, I ask this every meeting, and unfortunately, there doesn't seem to be any real evidence or any real actionable information from the Department of Health regarding how it is being spread in the community. There is, I don't know if you can consider anything about a virus, good news, but there is some reason, it's not all gloom and doom. The, the average age. Um, the, the average age of the people infected with this virus has going down. Um, it was primarily people thirty-five to sixty, thirty-five to fifty-nine. Um, now that has shifted dramatically. That, that curve of age has moved dramatically to the left. Now the, the majority of infections are the people from twenty-five to thirty-four. And also, we're seeing, um, more infections among children than we were seeing before, but that would kind of follow, because twenty-five to thirty-four would tend to be the people that have younger children at home. So, um, the good news to all this, if there is such a thing, is that the younger people are not getting the same, um, they don't seem to have the same dire consequences from this virus. They tend to be able to weather it better. They don't require as many hospitalizations. They don't require ICU beds. They tend to get better. Um, there's very, much fewer deaths associated with younger patients than there were when this was predominantly in the older population. Um, the Department of Health has told us several times over the past few months that the single most accurate predictor of death from this virus is age. And as this curve moves into younger people, it's still bad that people are getting sick, but we're not seeing the deaths increase. Although the virus positivity is going up very steeply, the deaths continue to decline, and the hospitalizations are remaining stable. So, um, I just want to try to keep everybody informed as much as I can. These meetings are public meetings. They're online, they're twice a week. They're Mondays and Thursdays at one-thirty. You can probably go crazy if you watch all of them. But, um, I try to keep people posted as much as we can. I wish I could tell you exactly what to do to protect yourself, but there doesn't seem to be any clear pattern to the transmission. So, um, with that, is there any other business to come before this council? Very well, then we are adjourned.